Hello and welcome to the Mid-Atlantic backgammon club study session for July 9th, 2025. If you're interested in joining us for our study sessions or for our weekly tournaments, send us an email at midatlanticbg@gmail.com. All right, we're picking up where we left off last time. We're in the Crawford game. We're behind. We're behind on the scoreboard, but we're doing very well in this game. And we're gonna try to do our best here to close this out. Winning a gammon would be nice, but not crucial at this score. So let's see, they've got a two-point anchor and we're just trying to bear in. So I'll take some suggestions now as how we should get those checkers in. And I've got the slide all running, so you can go check that out.
I say 12, 6, 8, 5.
12, 6, 8, 5. Looks like a reasonable choice. Puts checkers in good places. Any others?
I like that one.
You could make the seven point.
So that would be 16 to 7? Is that what you're asking Donald? Okay.
I'm not saying it's right, but.
Oh, but it's worth considering.
That's a really good one.
I'm saying no, we'll just look anyway. Something like that. When we first noticed them just back.
Bill, you've got something on in your background that's through audio.
Yeah, sorry.
Yeah.
Okay, any other plays that we ought to consider?
Nothing for.
There was something in his system who was.
Those definitely look pretty good. I've got the slider open if you want to vote for those or if there's another play that we ought to look at. Those are definitely pretty good. So I've decided I'm gonna hold off on voting and then I'll be the tie-breaking vote if we need to break the tie. That way, that way I'll be carrying the responsibility in case things go badly for us. Okay, we got a lot of votes for 12, 6, 8, 5.
Yeah.
That looks like.
12, 6, 8, 5.
Okay. 12, 6.
7 was the one.
8, 5. Okay, let's do it. And let's go back and see what does XG say about this. Pretty close. Here's another play we didn't talk about, 16, 10, 7, 4. Oops. A lot of plays, all pretty close. Going to the seven point is, sorry, going to the four point is pretty reasonable.
So the computer wants 16, 10, 12, 9. Which is the one we didn't even consider.
Right.
Oh, boy.
Okay, so now we're gonna, we're gonna be bearing in with a 3, 2. Okay, I'm sorry, I missed the chat. I should be, I should be looking at the chat for for some plays. Now, those, you guys who are putting stuff in the chat, that's great, but I also want you to vote on Slidl if you can. All right, give me some candidate plays here. Okay, I see Steven in there with 16, 14, 7, 4. Yeah, putting a checker on the four points, good.
16, 13, 7, 5. No waste.
16, 13, 7, 5.
How about bringing the 16 all the way around?
Okay, 16 to 11. There's no way we can leave a shot, right? Because they got two up.
Exactly.
So 16, 11 kinda gives you some flexibility. Any others that we might consider? They're looking pretty good. Okay, we can vote. I've got the slider open for all of those.
7, 4, 6, 4.
7, 4, 6, 4. Okay.
Oh. 7, 4.
I would say better, but I think it's worth a thought.
Well.
That would, that would leave a shot if we do double sixes.
Right.
Okay, yeah, there is that.
Did you do that? 7, 4, 6, 4?
Excuse me?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Would you do that?
No, 7. If we play 7, 4, 6, 4, yeah, Donald's right. If we then roll double sixes, we would leave a shot.
Ah.
I don't like that.
Okay.
So that, that's worth, that's worth thinking about.
That means it's wrong.
So let's go back. Let's look at some of these other ones. Let's, let's check those. If we play 16, 11, is there anything that we could roll that would leave a shot?
Nope.
It doesn't look like it. What if we played, what's the other one?
Wait, what does double fives do from there?
Double fives. Not real pleasant. Uh, we're gonna have to dump some checkers onto the ace point.
Yeah. One.
And it won't leave a shot unless they come in.
Yeah, but it can't come in with two men and hit us with anything.
Yeah, so this might be, this could be problematic if we roll double fives. Yeah, I don't, I don't know how good.
Well, a shot is bad.
Yeah. Uh, let's look at the other ones, like 16, 14, 7, 4. Okay. Doesn't leave a shot on double sixes, but we'd also get stuck. We'd play 14 to 8 and then that's all we could do. We wouldn't really be able to use it anymore. And then what about the other place? 16, 13, 7 to 5.
Like that.
Double sixes is fine. Double fives is fine.
That's, that's good. 16, 13, 7, 4.
6, 5 is not. Oh, no, I'm sorry. You still have two on the bar. Never mind.
Okay, we're voting now. If you haven't voted. Okay, we got a few votes in. Looks like 16, 14, 7, 4 is gonna win this. I like that one. It's putting a, it's putting a spare on the four point. We do want some checkers on the four point. Um, once we get to the point where we're trying to clear the six, we can't play fours off of the six point. Okay, it looks like that one's won the vote, so let's make this play 7 to 4, 16, 14. Let's see what XG says. Yeah, pretty good.
7, 5.
Yeah, tied with, basically tied with the 7, 5, 6, 3.
Yeah. That, that's a bit strange, no?
Yeah, that's a, that's a funny-looking play.
Yeah.
But it doesn't really matter. The differences are so small here.
Where 16, 13, 7?
Let's see, not that far behind. It's right here.
Wow.
Uh, it's only 10 millipoints behind. That's, that's, that's nothing. I don't worry about that kind of stuff.
No big deal.
Yeah, no big deal.
That was one of the other.
Okay, and they danced again. Now we got a 5, 2.
Run to the seven.
Yep, okay, now.
Yes.
Okay, now let's take a look at after we run to the seven. What happens with our big doubles? What happens if we roll double sixes?
We leave a shot.
We'd leave a shot.
Yep.
What if we roll double fives?
Uh, we're okay. 1, 2, 3.
Four men run to the ace point.
Four, we beat her. To the ace point. Yeah, all right, so we wouldn't leave a shot. Okay.
Very ugly. It's very ugly.
Sixes is a problem, though.
Okay, now I got a couple of other options that have shown up in the chat, including one that I like. Okay, so Mike Fujita in the chat says 14, 9, 6, 4. This will not leave a shot on double sixes. How does it do with double fives?
Good.
Yeah, pretty good.
Yep.
Yes, that would work.
Okay.
Fours work also.
Steven suggests 6, 1, 14, 12. How does that play with double sixes?
Six leaves a shot.
Yeah, double six is gonna leave a shot again. All right, well, we've, we've, I think we've got all the information we need. Well, what's our priority here? What are we trying to do? Do we really need to win a gammon?
14 to 9?
Yeah.
No.
9 and 6.
Oh, it, no, it would help us, yes.
How much would it, would it help us? Would it help us a lot or help us a little, right?
Oh, it doesn't help that much.
It doesn't help that much because we're odd away. You're odd away Crawford, winning a gammon, it's not that valuable. If we were even away Crawford, winning a gammon would have a lot of value.
Yes.
Okay.
That's right.
So being four away versus three away post Crawford, not much difference.
Right. About 1%, I think.
Yeah.
Something like that.
Okay, looks like we got some votes for 14, 9, 6, 4. That's, that's Mike's play that he nominated and looks like everybody likes that because it doesn't leave a shot on double sixes.
I like that.
And it feels like in this position, we really don't want to leave a shot. They got decent looking board on the other side. We gotta respect that.
Yep.
Okay, let's make that play and see how we did. All right, that's pretty good.
The computer says that's the best.
Okay.
Do you agree?
Yeah.
All right, they danced again. Now we got a 6, 4 to play.
9, 5, and take one off.
9, 5, 6 off. And there's also 9, 3, and take off. Okay, let's, let's look at those two plays. If we go 9, 5, 6 off. Um, is there any danger to this play?
6, 4 next time.
6, 4 next time. That's right.
That would be a problem.
That would be a problem. Okay, let's say if we play the other way, 9, 3, 4 off. Any problems next turn on this play?
Lot than I see.
Yeah.
Yeah, it looks pretty smooth, right? When you have three checkers on your two highest point, that's a, that's a pretty smooth bear off.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, Jason, may I ask a question about the value of the gammon, something separate?
Yeah.
Um, I, I understand when you said that since we're odd away, a gammon is worth less, but still, aren't we in a good position to go for one? He has two on the board. Even if he were to come back in, it was gonna take a while for him to move over these guys. Shouldn't we still think of a gammon? I know.
Yes, we should think about the gammon, but we have to think about what the value of that gammon is. The value of that gammon is, all it does is removes our opponent's free drop. We still have to win two more games after that, whether we're four away or we're three away.
Yeah.
It doesn't change how many games we have to win.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, now let's suppose that this score right now was four away. Then if we win a gammon now, then we would only need to one, win one more game to win the match.
Right.
I see, I see.
That's a huge difference.
Yeah.
So, so I'm not saying that a gammon is worthless. I'm saying that it's just, well, there's two ways I can use the word worthless. There's worthless and there's worth less.
Okay.
Okay, it's not worthless. It's just worth less.
Worth less, yeah.
Yeah.
I believe it's worth about 1% Jason.
That's right. It's a very, very small amount, which means we really should not be taking any additional risks to try to win a gammon. We will absolutely welcome winning a gammon if it happens, but let's not take any risk. Our top priority is just winning this game.
Yeah, that's true. Thanks.
Okay, so the votes are in for 9, 3, 4 off, and I like this play because there are no shots afterwards and that's what we're trying to avoid.
Remember, now we're trying not to.
What XG says. It's very close.
Yep.
But not, not too much difference. Okay, they danced again and now we have a 2, 1 to play.
Hmm.
Yeah.
6, 4, 5, 4.
Okay.
Like, I like 3 off.
6?
3 off. I say 3 off.
4, 3 off.
2, 1.
Okay. Anything else? Okay, let's look at these. 6, 4, 5, 4.
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
6, 4 then would be bad.
6, 4 is bad.
6, 4 would be bad, yes.
Okay, now let's look at 3 off.
I like that.
Yeah.
Pretty nice.
I like that better.
Okay. Would you consider a play like 4 to 1?
No, I don't like this.
What is, what does that accomplish?
I don't know. That's what I'm asking.
And double fours will be awkward, I think.
Ah, double fours look pretty bad after that, yeah. I, I was not seriously suggesting 4 to 1, but I, I am suggesting that we look at plays like that and try to figure out what's good, what's bad about them, and I think we just established, roll double fours, leave a shot.
Yep.
Okay, let's vote.
Little door.
All right, looks like the voting is to rip a checker off the three points, so let's do that. Uh-oh, XG says, oh, how about that? 6 to 3.
3.
All right, so what's the idea behind that play?
For Billy.
It, it, then double sixes will give them a shot or double fives?
Sixes, double fives.
Yeah, why would he do that?
Not that at all.
Wow, with XG.
You're looking for long-term safety.
Long-term safety.
Yeah, but that's not safe.
So that was my option 3 that I voted for, the 6 to 3.
Ah. Okay, well, let's see how we roll from here. Now we've got a 3, 2.
Now you have to clear the 6.
6, 3, 5, 3.
Yeah.
6, 3, 5, 3.
Yeah.
Let's look at that. Hey, at least now we don't leave shots on the high doubles.
Yeah, high 6 is fine.
Nope. 6. 6, 4 will be bad, but that's about it, I think.
Yeah, 6, 4, but.
We probably can't avoid that, right?
Yeah.
What about double fours, Jason?
Okay, what about double four after we do this?
Yeah.
Uh, yeah, we'll leave a shot on double fours.
Yeah. That's not good.
You're right, double fours, yeah.
Somebody say 5 off.
Yeah, what about 5 off?
Double sixes is a problem.
Double five.
Double five.
Fives.
And fours. And if you, you know, usually.
6, 5.
6, 5, yeah. 3 on the highest point and 2 on the second highest point is usually not great.
Right.
Okay, I've opened the voting.
Ah, voting, how we do?
Change their line.
Everybody goes for 6, 3, 5.
Go 6, 3?
6, 3, 5, 4.
Okay. We've got 5 votes. We're not getting a lot of votes here. We got 13 people in the Zoom call. Are you all voting?
Crazy.
I'm voting.
I voted.
Okay.
I voted.
Vote early, vote often.
Women are voting.
Is this, is this Chicago?
All right. Okay, let's go to the three point. That's what the voting is. All right, here we go. And this time, okay, good, not even close. Wow, look, taking a checker off the five points, a whopper. How about that?
That's so suggestive, that.
No.
Who, who voted for that?
Somebody spoke up on it.
We'll never know, right?
All right.
Okay, they danced again and then we rolled 6, 1, so that's easy.
Yep, no choice.
Oh, they just improved their board.
Oh, wow.
And now, it's, now it's even more imperative that we don't want to leave a shot.
Yeah, well, double fives.
3, 1.
3 off.
Okay, 3 off.
3, 1, and then off.
Any others that we want to consider? Okay, I see 5, 4, 3, 1.
5, 3, 4, 3.
5, 4, 3, 1. Okay, even on the high point.
Mm-hmm, yeah.
Uh, what will leave a shot after this?
6, 3, and 5, 3.
Yeah, 6, 3, 5, 3, right.
Fours, right? Oh, no.
Oh, fours, okay.
3. 3 is good.
Mm-hmm. Okay, what if we make this play, what leaves a shot?
6, 5.
6, 5.
5, 4.
5, 4 is okay.
5, 4 is okay. I love 5.
Sorry. Yeah, I'd be pretty happy with 5, 4. Okay, so this leaves a shot with two numbers and this leaves a shot with four numbers. I don't know, depends on, you know. It's two extra numbers. Is that important?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, I'm gonna open the voting. Here we go.
Jason, did we look at 5, 3, 4, 3?
Um, yeah, we did. It was, it was quite, quite long.
All right.
So what did we decide about 4, 3, 5, 3?
Um.
It's not on your.
Talking about three moves ago?
You know, that's really stacking it up.
Okay, this is close. All right. Very close, but I think we're gonna rip one checker. All right, here we go. Oh, no. 5, 3, 4, 3.
Number 1.
Yeah.
Yep.
All right, they popped two checkers out and now we rolled 6, 3.
5 off, 4.
4, 1.
Now, 6, 3, 4 to 1.
And then we could rip 2 off, 5 off, 3 off.
Mm-hmm.
That's about it.
That's probably worse.
Let's see. Here's ripping 2 off. How's that look to you?
Not good.
Scary.
It doesn't look good, does it?
No bueno.
Yeah, that's a no bueno right there. Uh, how many shot numbers here?
Too many.
6, 5.
5, 3, 6, 3, and all the big doubles.
Yeah, the other one is better.
And then if we do it this way, then we're only leaving a shot on 6, 3, 5, 3. Uh, and double threes.
Yep.
All right, I've opened the voting. Be great. All right, looks like we like going to the ace point. All right, let's do it. And this time we're right.
It's the computer.
Okay, now we got a 3, 1 to play.
No, this is the computer.
Off the 3, off the 1. Yeah.
3, 1.
Now, why does that make me nervous?
Because last trip.
You certainly have to consider 4, 1, 4, 3. Sure, 4, 1, 4, 3 might be better.
No.
I don't know that it is, but I would have to count it. I'd count the shots and everything, you know. It's certainly worth considering.
So let's, let's address this question. Why does this play make me nervous?
Well, I don't know.
Restripped.
Yes.
It's a gap if you take in the 4.
Inflexible.
Well, 5, 5, 3 would, 5, 3 would leave two shots.
There we go. I was about to say, let's think tactically.
Yeah.
If we roll 5, 3, or 6, 3, we leave a double shot.
Double.
Yeah, because we have to take one off on the stakes.
So I don't know if that's enough to swing this.
Yeah. Okay, so now 4, 1, 4, 3.
Okay, let's look at that.
And now what's bad? 5, 3, and 6, 3 leave a single shot.
5, 1, 6, 1, 4, 1.
A single shot.
And 4, 1.
And 4, 1 leaves a single shot, so.
So.
Many more ways to leave a single, but no way to leave a double.
All right, so how many shots does this leave?
5, 1, 4, 1, 6, 1.
5, 1, 4, 1. Uh, 1.
6, 3, 5, 3, 4, 3.
6, 3, 5, 3. That's 10.
And 4, 3.
And 4, 3. That's 12.
Oh.
Uh, any others?
But never a double shot.
Right, okay, so that leaves, this leaves, this will leave 12 shots. Now let's look at the other one. Okay, what leaves a shot here?
6, 3, 5, 3.
5, 3.
4, 3 are all double shots.
No, 4, 3 is good.
4, 3 is good.
6, 3, 5.
4, 2 is bad.
Double shots. So now there's four rolls that'll leave a double shot, and a double shot, you're roughly twice as likely to get hit. So.
3, 1.
3, 1 plays okay here.
3, 1 is good.
So if, if you're leaving four double shots, that's roughly equal to leaving eight single shots. So.
Say that again.
The other thing left 12.
A double shot is roughly as, twice as dangerous as a single shot.
Okay.
It's, that's not exactly right. It's a little less, but it, it's okay. There's, there's other issues too, like maybe getting a second checker hit. So you can really call it about twice as bad.
Yeah. But here's a key point, I think, Jason.
Okay.
If, if a single guy does get hit.
Uh-huh.
Um, I think, you know, we can still bring him around much more easily if two guys get hit.
True.
We have a very difficult time bringing them both home.
Yeah. Uh, so Steven writes in the chat, any hit, we're dead. I don't think we're totally dead. We're not doing great, but we still have.
The double we might, the double we might be.
There's still 20 shots to get us in.
Double shot, yeah.
If two guys get hit, I think we become an underdog.
Can I, can I ask a question? Whatever move we make here. Uh, oh, sorry, it's Crawford. No, uh, sorry, forget it. I thought, why not double at the next roll, but.
And, and Donald, you don't, you don't need to say, can I ask a question? Just ask your question.
Okay. All right.
Yeah, we can't, we can't double them out, Donald.
Yeah, yeah.
So what about, how about long-term safety? Does that, uh, does that matter?
Yeah. I think 4 to 1, 3 to 1 is more long-term safety also.
I think so too. I think this is gonna be much safer in the long term. If we can clear that 5 point, we're, we're, we're basically home free. Okay, let's vote. All right, lots of votes for clearing the 4 point.
And Jason, I want to mention this too, if I may.
Go ahead.
Not only is it the case that the, leaving a double shot is roughly, gives the, our opponent roughly twice as many as, or twice the probability as if, for a single. It's also the case that, um, uh, let's say, the, um, when you only have to leave a single shot, he's a dog to hit it. If you leave a double, he's a favorite to hit it.
Yes, I, I tried to account for that by saying that, you know, there's four double shots that we would leave and they count roughly double, so that's roughly like leaving eight single shots.
I understand.
And Jason, also, if he leaves it, if we leave two open, then that's gonna get, let him go checker fishing if he gets us.
Yeah, right, there's some checker fishing. Okay, I'll give you another, I'll give you another consideration. If we leave, let's say we leave a double shot and let's say they miss. Well, we still have work to do to clean it up, right?
Yeah, yep.
Okay, whereas if we make this play and we leave a single shot and they miss, our cleanup is so easy.
Yes.
One broom sweeps clean. Okay, so I think everybody liked this play.
Yep.
And, come on, come back. Come back. All right, here we go. Uh, all right, after all that.
3, 1 off.
Yay, mine. The only one.
Why, why would the computer do that?
Well, maybe it's because there were a lot of single shots that we would leave and maybe it was, it just wasn't worth it. I mean, we counted 12 of them, right? So.
Yeah.
The short-term safety must have overridden it. Look, it, it's close, right? 22 millipoints. It's not a huge difference. Okay, let's see what, how it transpired. Uh. Okay, then we rolled double sixes. Pretty good. Five, two. Okay, and then we cleaned it up and did we win a gammon? We did win a gammon. Okay, and Mike wants a rollout on the three, one play. Alright, I'll be happy to roll that out for you, Mike, here. In fact, it's, it might be pretty quick. See how this goes. It'll, it'll take about the eight minutes and it's, and it's close. Let's revisit that. It, it's rolling right now, Mike, and we can come back in about five minutes.
Okay, yeah, there's, um. Your long-term safety is better if you take checkers off.
I think so too. If you, wait, if you take the checkers off?
Right, so three off, one off. Um, has, when you, if you do get hit.
Oh, it's in the yard. If you wanna just run back and get it, it's on a chair.
So that's the argument for lots of these plays. So when you're hit, you have fewer checkers remaining.
Yeah, okay. Uh, looks like the rollouts got taken two checkers off. Okay, let's go to the next game. We got time to play another one, right? It's both Crawford now, so we can go ahead and double, right?
Mm-hmm, yeah, yeah.
I, I, I don't necessarily advocate playing the trick. Unless you really know what you're doing, which is. Um. You can, in a score like this, you don't have to double immediately. But I don't know that it's a great idea to be messing around with that. Alright, so let's, let's go ahead and cube. So they're gonna take.
Right, but that's because you could win a, if you get a good roll, you could possibly gammon them.
Uh, right.
The reason I just take, it just takes away a free drop. It's not such a big deal anyway.
But, but al- also, since they had the first roll, isn't the rule always to take? If you win the first roll?
No, well, they have a free take because we're all the way.
Exactly.
So they're, they're gonna take, if we double on the first roll, they're gonna take anything. No matter what. They have a free take. So that's the, that's kinda like the opposite of a free drop.
A free drop, yeah.
Alright. So, alright, now that we've doubled, this is a gammon-go situation. We wanna win a gammon, so we should be thinking about that with our plays.
Yes. Wow.
So twenty-four, eighteen, thirteen to ten?
Twenty-four, eighteen, thirteen to ten.
Yep.
It is also twenty to fifteen.
We're kind of enticing him to hit loose if we can't, like on that, on his seven. And then we can come in and get a six and hit him back.
Okay, so I also put twenty-four to fifteen in there.
Did anyone consider thirteen, seven, and thirteen, ten?
Um, I'm not old enough to make a play like that.
Asking for it.
Okay, I've opened. I've opened the voting. Okay, looks like the votes are for the running play, so let's go for it. They played double fours. Sorry, my rollout is still going, so we'll. Still waiting on the analysis of the previous play. We'll come back to that. Okay, two, one to play.
Thank you, that's five, and hit on six, five.
Fifteen, thirteen. Six, five. I'll look at the answer for the previous play in just a minute.
Uh, I also like six, five, thirteen, eleven.
Thirteen, eleven, six, five. Okay, now, let's, I, I just wanna point out one weakness of this play, which is what?
Still vulnerable.
Opponent has a better board.
That's not what I'm thinking about, although, although that's very true. Maybe I should have thought about that. I, I do think we have to fight for the five point.
That's why I like the thirteen, eleven.
That's not the facet of this position I'm looking at right at the moment. I think six to five is an absolute must.
Yep.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I think we have to fight for that five point because we wanna win a gammon. If we don't get hit, we're gonna be in great position. Uh, to make the five point, that's gonna increase our gammons. Okay, now, let's talk about the two. What is the strategic weakness of this play?
It's not really aggressive.
Stack them up, you stack them up on the thirty.
Big stack. Donald's got it. Big stack.
Big, big, big stack.
Now, that, that, that doesn't mean to say that it's wrong, but it is a clear. Uh, strategic disadvantage to have a big stack. So Donald was saying that this play puts six checkers on the midpoint. You really don't want six checkers on a point. Okay, now, what is the, what are some advantages and disadvantages of this play?
You come in with a five, six.
Right.
Okay, we could get double hit.
Yep.
They could also hit us on our fifteen point.
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. Now, there's a little bit of duplication. They might wanna hit us with threes on our five point and also wanna hit us with threes on the fifteen point. So there's a little duplication there. That cuts down on the number of rolls that we. Uh, might get hit with.
Should we advance our, uh, I mean, hit six, five, but should we think about advancing our back checker?
Okay, Michelle points that out along, Steven said the same thing. Maybe advance the back checker.
Yep.
Okay, so I put that in there. So if you wanna consider that place.
And still hit six, five.
And still hit six, five.
Yeah.
I, I would, I would really be shocked if six, five was not part of the top plays.
Twenty-four, twenty-two.
Okay, we've, we've got some, uh, we've got some interesting candidate plays. Alright, let's vote if you haven't already. Alright, the voting, votes are coming in.
It's a tie.
They're coming in. Fast and furious. Ooh, this late entry of twenty-four, twenty-two, six, five is winning the vote right now. Got eight votes in.
Can, can I, can I understand the merit of the twenty-four, twenty-two?
I think it's, uh, there's some duplicate, duplication also there.
Yep, okay.
Maybe easier to escape.
Little bit, little bit easier, yeah, okay.
If you don't get hit.
If you don't get hit. Alright, looks like that's won the vote. Uh, triple duped, that, so it's, there, it's triplicated.
Yes.
If you get it, you can also anchor up on a higher anchor.
Yeah, you can anchor on a higher point.
Yes.
Alright. Think that's won the vote. This is not my play.
Me neither.
I, I'm prepared to gather my smug equity. It went thirteen to eleven. Okay, well, let's find out, you know, believe it or not, I have been wrong in the past.
Sure.
I know you're shocked to hear this.
Not you, Jason.
Uh. Uh, I'll take my smug equity now.
Thirteen, eleven, six, five.
Okay, why, why is this right? Um, that checker on the eleven point is pretty well protected. As we mentioned, the only way you, they double hit is with, um.
Six, six, six.
And it gets us more covers for the five point and the five point. Boy, we really want that five point.
Right there. It's more, more shooters at that spot. If they hit us, it's three shooters at it. If they don't, it's three covers for it.
Yes. Okay, now, I don't wanna, I don't wanna stay smug for too long because the very next play, I could make a huge blunder.
Of course.
Alright, so I'm, I'm done being smug. Okay, they anchored on their four point and now we have a six, five play.
Boy, I wish I had that six from eleven to play.
Yeah, I didn't wanna say it.
Wow.
I'll say it, cause it was, cause it was my suggestion that that was a move. Okay. So, let's see what the hell we do now.
What was it? Twenty-two, eleven?
Yep.
Yep, okay. Seems like a pretty reasonable play. Put a checker.
Yep.
A cover for the five point.
Yes.
Checker on the eleven, doesn't get hit that much.
Yep, correct.
Okay, any other plays we ought to consider? Eighteen, three, fifteen, three is not legal. We would like to be able to move this all the way.
Stop us. When did that ever stop us?
Well, if you're gonna make it illegal, go fifteen to five instead. What the hell?
Yeah, that's right.
That's only ten.
If, if you're gonna be off by one, be off by one that way.
Right, and Bill, Bill, the, the, the way to do it is, you guys just gotta move it real fast.
Yeah, well. I've seen, I've seen guys move, make a play. And then undo. But when they undo, the guy into fifteen somehow ends up on the sixteen. Then they redo and they make the five point. And that, and that to call director, I want you to run the tape on this guy, cause I know that checker used for the fifteen. How'd he end up on the five?
Bill, shut up. You're telling everybody all my tricks.
Oh, Jason, you never done, well, he's not in any match against me. You've never done that. Or if you did, I missed it.
That you, that you know of.
Right, that I missed it.
Alright, so, so far, this is the only play up for suggestion. Is there, uh? Is there anything else? I don't know. What about the, uh, there's thirteen to two, I guess. You know, we are behind in the race. And we're, we can't cover this checker, so if, if we get hit, uh, we will definitely be behind. It's a tough one, right?
Yeah, it is.
Well, everybody likes twenty-two to eleven. There's no votes for. Votes for anything else? Okay, Jacob has another option, fifteen to eleven.
Do a thirteen, eight, and a fifteen, nine.
Yeah, that was a suggestion that just came in. Okay, here's fifteen, nine, thirteen, eight.
Uh, it's ones and fives.
And then a one, four gets us, gets both.
It doesn't duplicate ones.
I don't like it.
How not?
And the duplication of fives, I don't think that's real duplication because they weren't gonna be hitting us loose with a five. So I actually think there's not duplication here. Duplication means you make a play where your opponent. Has a, a dilemma of what to do. But in this case, you're giving them a five. They didn't really have a good five before. I, I don't see them playing, uh, hitting loose on the three point without covering it. So that's not really duplication. Steven points out, unless they get double fives. Yes, that's right. That's. There is duplication there, but that's one roll out of thirty-six.
Yeah.
Well, all the votes seem to be for going to the eleven point, so, shall we do it?
Okay.
Okay, here we go. Let's see what XG says. Oh, look, we got it right.
Yep.
Nice.
Yeah, tough play. We're an underdog right now, but that's alright. Look, they didn't hit us. It's great.
Double two.
That's awesome.
Yeah, maybe we can, uh, recover.
We'll get, still a good roll for them, but. Now, we should cover that.
This is good, right?
Yes.
Oh, yeah.
This is.
Most important first, six, five.
Alright, fifteen to eleven's illegal.
Yep.
Happened to eight, six, five.
Yeah.
Six, five together with what?
Wait, fifteen to eleven, fifteen, eleven is not illegal. It just isn't the best play.
In the chat, somebody posted, Jules posted fifteen to eleven, six to five. That's another one of my tricky plays.
I like that one. Yeah, I seem to try your new tricks I've just learned now.
Yeah, you've learned something very important today, yeah.
Sorry about that.
Eleven, eight, six, five.
Eleven, eight, six, five, yeah, okay.
Do the fifteen. To eleven and six, five.
Okay.
That's four, one.
That's four, one.
Yeah.
Do that.
It's good, it's good though. Yeah, it's good, yeah.
It is, oopsie.
Yeah.
It's alright.
It's one of those sliders.
Yeah, that's right, yeah. Is there any way that we should play like eight to five and something else, like?
Eight to five and eleven to ten?
Yeah.
No.
No, eight to five, fifteen, fourteen.
Fourteen.
Okay, that's a possibility. Fifteen?
Fifteen, eight, six, five. Eight to three on the eight. Okay.
Yeah. Jules says he likes to keep three checkers on the eight point. Yeah, that makes sense.
For them to hit on the eleven, they're gonna have two blots too.
That's true.
So the fact that it's seven away, I think it's worth leaving it there.
Yes.
Yeah.
What about, so, that, that'd be eight, five, fifteen, fourteen in that scenario.
Five, fifteen, fourteen. Yeah, I got that in there now.
Yep. There's also, there's eight, five, six, five.
Five, six, five, that's interesting.
I like leaving a builder on the eight.
Yeah, that builder on the eight could be useful. I don't know exactly how, but I, I, I'm hesitant to strip the eight point.
Yep.
There, there's flexibility issues to be, uh, concerned about.
Somebody says six, five, six, three. Start another point.
Yep.
Oh, six, five, six, three, yeah. Let me put that in there.
Strips the elders off the six, but.
Yeah, it does.
Starts another point.
Uh, oh, um. Okay, Mike suggested fifteen to eleven.
I don't see the, uh, slider thing.
Okay, I have to, anytime somebody suggests a new play, I have to deactivate it to add a new.
Got you.
It's kind of annoying that way. Alright, let's vote. We got a lot of options here. Okay, let's see. Alright, getting lots of votes in here. Good, good. Alright, eleven, eight, six, five is winning the vote. That's what I picked. I like this.
Yeah.
Okay, let's do it. Oh, wow, very close with fifteen to eleven. Certainly would need a rollout. And what was the other plays we were looking at? Fifteen, fourteen, eight, five, not that far behind. Eight, five, six, five, not that far behind.
Eleven, ten, eight, five was another one.
Yeah. Where's eleven, ten, eight, five? Oh, there it is. Oh, that's kinda far behind.
Six, five, six, three was another one.
Yeah. Okay. Alright, they've made their two point. Things are getting dicey. Oh, sorry, sorry for the bad one.
Fifteen, thirteen, six, five.
Yeah, so now, you, you're going for safety, huh? Therese?
Yep, yep.
Fifteen, thirteen, six, five.
Yeah, four-point board there.
Looks good, yeah. Really don't wanna get hit now.
Yeah, we really don't wanna get hit now. Now, we, we are also behind in the race. That's something to, to be thinking about.
Like, we're up thirteen. I'm not, do not.
We're down thirteen.
Oh, are, we have thirteen more pips, so we're losing thirteen. I got it. I can never mind, I'm. I am embarrassed.
Uh.
To have misunderstood that. Being a math major and everything else.
In this situation, we really gotta just play it safe.
Still don't wanna get hit though, like. Even though we are behind by.
Gotta play safe, although I, I really hate that big stack and I'm not a big fan of stripping the six point.
Yeah, correct.
I think Therese may be right also.
Yeah.
He's also got no connectivity.
Eight to five is just too dangerous.
Yeah.
He's got no connectivity between his four and twelve also, so like, the odds that we're gonna get some shots here are not bad.
That's correct.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote.
I did.
We're about twelve minutes to the hour, so maybe we'll do, uh, one more. And nobody likes the, uh, eight to five play. It's a nice idea, right? I mean, it. Nice distribution, but you don't wanna get hit, so get hits with all threes, two, one, six, five. That's fifteen shots. That's not great. And they have a four-point board. Okay, we're gonna make the safe play. Here we go.
Yep.
And XG says, yes, the safe play is right. Eight to five is not really all that great. Look at the second best play.
Fifteen, thirteen.
Eight to seven, slot that one.
That's weird.
Yeah. And that's a more valuable point, I think, and also you're putting it in front of a stripped point. Right.
Yep, yes. But yeah, if he has to with a three, he'd rather get hit there than the other place. That's for sure. Lots of returns and everything else.
Okay, how do you like, how do you like this roll?
Yeah.
I don't. The, the answer is you don't. You don't like this roll.
Eight, eight, two, five, two.
Yeah, that's really all you got.
I agree.
Um. What about eight, five, eight, two?
Five, eight, two also.
Here's eight, two, five, two, ugh, boy, that's rough, that's rough looking right there. Here's eight, two, five, two, ugh, boy, that's rough, that's rough looking right there. Stripped points. No spares on the six and the five.
Choices though.
And I guess this is the other option.
That's not too nice either.
That's not too nice either, there's nothing good here.
Yeah, I think it's better to keep that spare checker back farther.
Yeah, uh, this kinda points out sort of the danger of having that big stack on the midpoint, having no spare on the six. It's, it, it creates an inflexible position, and now you see how, you know, six, three, yeah, we can play it okay, but it's, it's really not exciting at all.
Nope. Whereas if we had that, we had gone, um, what was it, some, something that put a, a blot on the seven, we'd now be covering it with the six.
Yeah. Okay, let's vote, and then we're gonna do one more and then quit. All right, looks good, we're gonna make the two point. And XG says, yeah, pretty close.
Mm-hmm.
Not too surprising. Okay, they brought two down, and now we have a six, five to play. This might be a nothing burger.
Thirteen to two.
Is there anybody who would consider bringing two down?
Hmm, no.
It's risky.
It is risky.
Thirteen to two.
Yeah.
Merit, Jason, uh, is the merit of this, that if he doesn't, when he doesn't roll the three, then we have a reasonable chance to close that point on the seven.
Yeah, if you get away with this, it's fantastic.
But who wants to get bumped back?
And, and Jason.
I don't think it makes a correct move, I, I see some merit to it.
Yeah, I, I, you can see the upside, I just don't think it's quite worth it. I, I'm not sure though, I mean, I, I, I can see some scenario out there where this could be right, but I, I'm just, I look across the board and I see this threatening four-point board with these builders on the outside that are getting ready to, uh, pounce. Ugh, boy, that, that worries me. Okay, this is gonna be our last one, um, and it looks like all the votes are for thirteen to two, that looks like our play. So let's make our last play of the day. And we'll take a quick peek, see how close the other one was. Look at that, it's actually just about tied.
Wow.
Yeah, how about that?
Yeah.
Your K A trading sounds a, a little bit better.
Yeah, again, I, yep, I need a rollout to, to really be sure. Okay, I'm gonna, let's do a sign-off, hold on, I'm gonna mute everyone just for a moment. All right, thank you for joining the Mid-Atlantic Backgammon Club Study Session for July ninth, twenty twenty-five. If you're interested in joining our study session or our weekly tournament, send us an email at midatlanticvg@gmail.com.